We'd like to welcome everybody in the whole county that's here tonight. We appreciate you. And I'm glad that you're here. We're glad that you're here for this. We have some special honors that we have lined up here, and we're glad that you were able to attend. I'm Dave Erickson. I'm the council chair. At this point, we're going to turn the time over to council member Catherine Buse to do the opening.
Thank you. I'll start with just a prayer. Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to be here today and to do the county business before the people. We're grateful for those that have attended and that are here to support, and we're grateful for their input today. My Father, we thank thee that we can live in such a beautiful place, and we've been blessed with bountiful blessings of water and to have the safety and security that we enjoy here. We ask thee to please guide us and direct us as we make decisions and help us to be wise in what we do. We ask thee to please protect our residents here in our county and help us that we can make decisions that affect their lives, that we can seek for the best decisions to promote their liberty and their God-given rights. We thank thee again for this opportunity, and we say things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Now we'll turn the time to here for the presentation of the colors and the pledge.
Cash County Sheriff's Office Honor Guard attend who? Carrie Cook. Or Mark. Will the audience please rise? Ho. Praise and. Will the audience please repeat the pledge allegiance after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or? The audience may be seated. Reverend, rest.
It's my honor tonight to read a proclamation from the Cache County. It says, "Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 14 through 20th, 2023, as National Law Enforcement Week; and whereas the members of the Cache County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Cache County; and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Cache County Sheriff's Office increasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore, in recognition of all enforcement officers and in particular, the men and women in the Cache County Sheriff's Office, be it resolved that the Cache County Council and the Cache County Executive, County of Cache, State of Utah, hereby proclaim the week of May 14 through May 20, 2023, as Law Enforcement Week, and call upon all citizens of Cache County and all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens, and Monday, May 15, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And further, call upon all citizens of Cache County to honor those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, as Chair of the Cache County Council and County Executive, we have herein to set our hand this ninth day of May, 2023."
I would accept a motion to accept that proclamation. So moved. Moved and seconded that we accept that proclamation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Motion is approved.
At this point, I think it would be fitting, could we have a moment of silence? Honor Guard attend who? Or Mark? Ready, please. Or Mark? We would like to, yes, please. We would like to thank Cache County Sheriff's Honor Guard for that presentation. Very fitting. And we also thank you for your reverence and honor in respecting this wonderful flag and respecting all those that are serving. At this point, review and approval of the agenda. I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded that we approved the agenda. Actually, it would be the amended agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's go ahead and go on to the minutes. There are a couple little changes I know we have to make on the minutes. And we'll, let's go ahead and approve the minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
There's a couple of things that I think we do need to look at. For example, it's missing some motions and some seconds.
And we'll actually, which are the same ones that I was looking into?
Probably.
Yeah, we're going to take care of those here in just a second on a follow-up.
The first two are, they were just called incorrectly. We'll just need to redo that. It's the two appointments from two weeks ago. The last one is the accepting the fire contract to hire firefighters for Hyrum. There was no second, and I couldn't find, I don't think we did have a second.
I was going to say, I think there was a second.
And I think I was the second.
Who made the motion?
It was Barbara. It was a motion.
We add that as an amendment to the minutes.
I was going to say, you guys on that little recording, we do it auctioneer style, so you got to keep up here. So, okay, I think it was just the one that we will, we will actually just take care of that after. Can we approve those minutes as read, or, excuse me, as they are written right now?
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes as written with corrections made later.
Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Well, just before the county executive's report, let's go ahead, and we had those couple appointments in there. My iPad died a little earlier. Do you have that list on those minutes? If you could bring those up.
Okay.
We had, and it was the appointment of the county executive brought to us of Aljay Rigby to be on the planning commission. And what was the other one? Was there another one? The next one? Oh, and the appointment, did we not have a motion for the Stephen Nelson one?
We did. Oh, we didn't?
I looked at the recording, and there's, both times you called it as, as just.
Just accepting any appointments. Okay, so I'll have a motion to approve those two.
So moved.
Moved that we approved of Aljay, and seconded that we approved Aljay Rigby on the planning commission and Stephen Nelson on the county as the Development Services Director. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Now I'll turn the time over to county executive for you. More business.
Mr. Chairman, if you prefer, I'll yield my time to the sheriff, and I can just report on these items at the end when the council does the reports.
It'll save some time and then be able to keep these, you don't want to sit in a boring meeting, so. Okay, thank you very much for doing that. We'll now go ahead and turn the time over to Sheriff Jensen, and for some special, I hope there's some special remarks right from you. You're kind of a flamboyant speaker.
How about that? If I can get the lieutenants to come in here and join me. Okay, council, thank you very much for the honor that you gave the flag and reading the proclamation and making Law Enforcement Week another special thing for public safety and for law enforcement in our valley. I appreciate everybody who's here tonight, especially our friends at the county attorney's office, our partners at Logan City, and for all that they do for public safety in our valley as well. This is a little bit odd this year because council meeting didn't fall during Law Enforcement Week like every other year that it does. But this is a special week too, because this is National Corrections Officers Week as well, leading into Law Enforcement Week next week. And as the council knows, and maybe not all the citizens know, that that's really, half of our offices are corrections, and they do a hard, hard job, and they should be recognized together with public safety, but also honored this week for their service in corrections. So with that, I wish I could give everybody in our ward an office for the thousands of great things that they do every year. I told this council before, and I've said this publicly before, I truly am the luckiest guy in the world to, A, work for Cache County, and B, be a part of the organization that I get to be a part of and hope have some good that happens in Cache County. But it's really all of these folks sitting here that makes the difference to each and every one of us. So tonight, we're going to just honor a few of the thousands of great things that have taken place from our corrections and law enforcement staff throughout 2022. So with that, we're going to start with the jail division. It's a life-saving award, and if we could have Brandon Lucas, Randy Joe Edverson, Kenley Jenkins, and Jessica Aliva come forward. And while they're walking up, I'll read about this award. This is a life-saving award. The life-saving ribbon is presented to an employee who directly involved in saving the life of another for actions if not taken would have most likely resulted in the death of another person, whether on or off duty. On March 1, 2023, an inmate was brought into the jail area and was acting strange. Deputy Lucas and Nurse Jenkins recognized and recommended that the inmate was not in a physical or mental condition to remain in jail and would be safer receiving medical care at the hospital. The inmate was placed in a cell where he could be closely observed. Shortly after that, the inmate began to have what appeared to be a seizure. Deputy Lucas responded immediately and notified Nurse Jenkins and other qualified personnel to respond. Deputy Edverson also responded to assist with inmate's medical emergency. Oxygen was provided to the inmate, and vitals were taken while protecting the inmate's head and neck from hitting the wall and the floor while seizing. At the time, the inmate lost consciousness and stopped breathing. Deputy Edverson and Deputy Lucas administered CPR until the prisoner began breathing once again. Once the prisoner was breathing, Deputy Edverson provided security for the nurses who had responded while Deputy Lucas retrieved the AED machine to be used as the prisoner continued to experience heart irregularities. During this time, the deputies and medical staff recognized the inmate was experiencing symptoms consistent with opioid overdose. Once this was determined, two doses of naloxone were administered to the inmate, and shortly after, the inmate regained consciousness and stabilized. If it hadn't been for the quick observations and their recognition of symptoms of an overdose and the knowledge of how to treat this condition, it is most likely the inmate would have not lived through this overdose episode. And I am pleased and proud to award the life-saving ribbons to Deputy Brandon Lucas, Randy Joe Edverson, Nurse Kenley Jenkins, and Jessica Aliva.
Sheriff, could some of those in the hall, would you like to maybe just even come up around here? If you'd like to come in, make sure you can see things. Come in, and we'll make room for you somewhere. You can stand up here around us and everything, or even take my seat.
Tell those folks if they want to come in to get up here behind the rostrum. They're welcome to come in, see their family.
Come on in. Come on in. Yeah, there's room right up around in here.
We don't bite.
Taylor, let them come up around here, yeah. I mean, they ought to, they got to see this. There.
There's a lot of people out there.
Maybe the rest of Cache County's coming now. Come up and around. You bet. You bet. Yes. Sorry for that, but we just don't want to have anyone miss out.
Thank you. A life-saving award for the jail division. Brock Byington, if he could come forward, please. On November 11, 2022, an inmate was arrested for a serious criminal case. Unknown to the jail staff, this individual was very depressed and was subject to self-harm ideations. The new criminal case he was booked for greatly affected his individual mental state. He was embarrassed, mentally ill, and ashamed. When the inmate was screened for suicidal thoughts by jail medical staff, the individual stated that they were fine and had no suicidal intentions or thoughts. Not long after this individual was booked into jail, he was allowed to go into the booking restroom. After a short time in the restroom, Deputy Byington became aware this individual was not responding and was found kneeling in front of the toilet with his face blue, and he was holding something tight around his neck. The individual had taken off the long-sleeved shirt he was wearing and tied it around his neck. Deputy Byington responded quickly, removed the shirt from the individual's neck. Once removed, the individual's color returned to his face, and he received the medical and mental health care he desperately needed. Had it not been for Deputy Byington's quick actions, this individual would have successfully ended his own life. In the correctional environment, oftentimes inmates will fake suicide attempts in order to escape custody or to assault staff. Deputy Byington acted without regard for his own safety to save this inmate's life. There is no doubt this individual is alive today because of the actions by Deputy Byington, and I am pleased to award the life-saving ribbon to Deputy Brock Byington. Life-saving award, if we could have Sergeant Matt Butler, McQuade Allen, Brock Byington, and Christian Boss, please come up front. Don't leave too early. On January 24, 2023, while off duty and home alone, an employee of the Cache County Sheriff's Office experienced a personal crisis. This particular individual had been in contact with friends, family, and others, off-duty coworkers throughout the day via text. This individual sent a text message that was very concerning, and then stopped responding to all texts and calls. These four deputies worked together to determine whether this coworker was okay. Ultimately, they responded to the home and found this individual was experiencing a serious medical emergency. At this time, these deputies did everything they could to help their coworkers and friend. Their actions to recognize and respond to someone in need ensured this individual's received the medical care that they were in immediate need of, which is very likely saved this person's life. This was a stressful and unpleasant, scary, and unnerving situation for an individual. These deputies could have written off the unresponsive text communication to something that was not concerning and gone about their day, but they didn't. Instead, they recognized there was a problem that they needed. To respond, their thoughtfulness and selfish actions will not be forgotten. And I'm pleased to award the life-saving ribbon to Sergeant Matthew Butler, Deputies McQuade Allen, Brock Byington, and Christian Boss. Randy Joe Edverson, if you could please come back to the front. The outstanding achievement award is presented to a deputy or staff member that excels in the performance of their duty above and beyond that which required during their daily course of work. They have exercised competence and have been able to inspire others to improve their quality of work. Deputy Edverson is the classifications deputy in the jail. This role is critical in maintaining the safety and security of staff and inmates alike. Any mistake in the classification process could affect the physical safety of the inmates and staff and county liability. Deputy Edverson pays a lot of attention to detail and works closely with on-duty security staff, medical staff, and other correctional facilities to ensure the inmates are classified correctly. Her quality of work has been impeccable and played a role in why she was asked and tasked with this enormous assignment in August of 2022. There was another project. It was a Level 1 search of the Cache County Jail. This type of search is the most intrusive level of searches that a jail staff can conduct. It's very involved in staff and typically involves several specialized teams such as CERT, SWAT, gang team, K-9 deputies, partnering agencies, and additional line-level staff to complete the search. The search took nearly 24 hours to conduct, and numerous items of contraband, some of which were deadly weapons, were found in the search, leaving the jail in a much safer place. Deputy Edverson spearheaded this task with a near flawless execution and earned much respect from her supervisors and coworkers. Deputy Edverson routinely works with the drug task force involving issues with dangerous drugs being brought into our jail. She routinely volunteers to help all shifts search female arrestees that come into our facility. Deputy Edverson also works with the Sheriff's Office' gang task force to gather gang intel, which she uses to help keep the jail and the streets of Cache County safe from gang activity. Deputy Edverson's capacity to go above and beyond is admirable and undoubtedly a great asset to the citizens of Cache County, and I am pleased to award the outstanding achievement award for the jail division to Deputy Randy Joe Edverson. Outstanding, Mark Fishburne, if he could come forward while I read. Outstanding achievement award, jail division. Deputy Mark Fishburne has always been the type of employee everyone knows that if you want something done right and done well, you ask Mark to do it, whether you want him to or not. He often volunteers before you even get a chance to ask. He is always looking for ways to improve what is being done. For example, Deputy Fishburne, Steve, has managed all the inmate jail supplies for over three years, which is very time-consuming and physically demanding, ensuring our facility has all the necessary items for more than 300 people who live there each and every day. He views his assignment as a challenge to see how much the program can be improved and become more efficient and more organized. He has done a fantastic job with this task. With his constant eye on planning and awareness of emergency preparation, the jail would have found itself in a tight spot during the 2020 pandemic when there were many supply chain issues. Deputy Fishburne constantly seeks ways to ensure our tax dollars are spent most efficiently by double-checking each item bought in as high-quality and purchased at a fair price. He is also streamlined ordering to keep the jail supply inventory stocked and stored strategically. Although this could be a full-time duty, Deputy Fishburne additionally performs his line-level duties in the jail while volunteering to take on new assignments and projects. He has helped clean, paint, and label the jail walls, floors, and doors this past year. He has revamped what the jail calls crash carts, which carries supplies for deputies to respond to emergencies more quickly. And I'm pleased to award the outstanding achievement award for the jail division to Deputy Mark Fishburne. There's one little caveat with Mark. 25 years ago, I called him Steve, and the nickname has stuck ever since, so. But Steve was a good man too, Mark, so. Could we get Duncan Wright to start this way? Outstanding achievement award. Before moving to Utah, Deputy Wright lived and worked in Alaska as a corrections officer, eventually moving his career to the Cache County Sheriff's Office, bringing with him a wealth of knowledge and experience. Over the last year, Deputy Wright has been operating as the inmate programs deputy. In this position, he has had great success in creating relationships with citizens of Cache County and volunteers that provide a vital and valuable programming to our inmates. This position involves developing and maintaining solid relationships with local volunteers, religious organizations, educational institutions, and many nonprofit organizations that provide services to our inmates so they can successfully reintroduced into society. Deputy Wright individualizes the inmate programming schedule to each inmate's needs and requirements. Creating this program scheduling involves intense concentration and rigorous work to develop, maintain, and manage. Deputy Wright is often complimented regarding his empathy, helpfulness, kindness, and knowledge by his coworkers, supervisors, and inmates alike. He has been very involved with the Cache County School District and has facilitated numerous opportunities for high school students to participate in the jail's Project Reality Program, which gives teenager a glimpse into what life is like for those who make poor choices resulting in a cycle of recidivism. Project Reality is an educational program highly rated by participating students and educators who find inherent value in it. Inmates also feel a sense of worth and value in being allowed to share their stories with a younger generation by encouraging them to take a different life and path. Deputy Wright schedules and conducts dozens of these classes each year and has kept the program updated with the most current information, the most relevant inmate experience, and the powerful presentation that leaves a lasting impression on our students. Because of the quality and the way Deputy Wright conducts himself, he received the Community Partner Award of the Year in 2022 from the Adult Education Association of Utah, and several letters of thank you and appreciation from students and schools around Cache Valley. Deputy Wright's capacity to go above and beyond what is expected of him each day is admirable and undoubtedly a great asset to the citizens of Cache County, and I am pleased to award an outstanding achievement award for the jail division to Deputy Duncan Wright.
All right, real quick, I'm going to have Patrol Division, and we're going to do the first award for, it's a life-saving award, for Deputies Leonard Clark, Humphries, Price, Schoff, and Nybert, if you can please come forward. On 3/25 of 2023, right before this year started and before our awards banquet, we were in response to a home burglary that was in progress. On their way there, they learned the individual had broken a window and gained entry into the basement of the home. Deputies quickly and efficiently responded to the residence. The individual was seen inside the residence, covered in blood, and then continued to go further into the residence. At that time, a decision was made to force entry into the home due to the homeowners and family still being inside. As deputies set up containment and organized their response, eventually, the suspect was seen again, came out of the residence, and at that time had serious injuries and was bleeding profusely. Immediate medical aid was rendered to the suspect. The residence was cleared, and through a coordinated and organized response, this individual's, the doctors at the hospital said this individual would have perished for sure had any more minutes of bleeding taken place. With great honor, we recognize these deputies for their life-saving efforts on 3/25 of 23.
We've had Cody Atwood, Robert Price, and Enrique Mesa come up. While they're walking up, I'll read this. On January 3, 2003, at approximately 1:00 in the morning, Deputy Price was assigned to a call regarding a suicidal juvenile planning to drive off a cliff in Logan to a call regarding a suicidal juvenile planning to drive off a cliff in Logan Canyon. While searching for the vehicle in Logan Canyon, Deputy Mesa spotted the car speeding east towards Garden City and attempted a traffic stop, but the vehicle continued to speed away. Acting as the officer in charge and knowing the driver was suicidal, with no regard for the safety of themselves or others, Deputy Atwood recognized the danger of pursuing the vehicle through the dark and snowy canyon and called off the pursuit. Deputy Mesa terminated the pursuit with the hope that this would cause the driver to slow down and avoid crashing. Deputy Atwood, concerned that the subject may have made it into Rich County, requested assistance from Rich County, but they were unable to respond. He then instructed Deputy Mesa to continue into Rich County, searching for the vehicle. At that time, Deputy Mesa located the subject's vehicle stuck in the snow. The driver was non-compliant and refused to follow Deputy Mesa's command to exit the vehicle, locking themselves in the car instead. After Price arrived to assist, the deputies breached the window, broke, and allowing them to extract the subject safely. These deputies are to be commended for their courageous actions. Deputy Atwood for demonstrating strong leadership skills and extraordinary decision-making. Deputy Mesa for making a quick decision in a high-speed, high-speed situation. The determination to locate the juvenile. And Deputy Price for recognizing the situation's urgency and deciding to break the window to get the driver the medical attention that they needed. Had it not been for these deputies' quick thinking and action, this event could have had very, a very different outcome. And I am pleased to award the unit citation to deputies Atwood, Price, and Mesa." Okay, the next unit citation, Patrol Division. We've had Skylar Jensen, Seneca Holt, and Todd Higbee come up front. "On April 19, 2022, deputies Higbee, Jensen, and Holt were an integral part of the apprehension of an armed robbery suspect. This apprehension involved a pursuit, an officer-involved shooting, and the life-saving care of the offender. While on patrol, a call came out for an armed home invasion robbery. The offender had entered the home with a rifle and stole the homeowner's minivan. That vehicle was spotted by deputies a short time later, and a pursuit was initiated. Deputies knew they were pursuing an armed offender but unaware the offender had been involved in an incident earlier in Boxheller Counties where shots had been fired at another person. When the pursuit stopped at a dead-end road, the suspect lunged from the vehicle armed with a rifle. The suspect was met with rifle fire to gain compliance, to remove the threat he posed to our community. After the suspect was on the ground and still in possession of the rifle, deputies Higbee, Jensen, and Holt formed a team and moved in to secure the offender and administered medical emergency treatment until medical units could arrive. Deputies Higbee, Jensen, and Holt's actions placed him in a dangerous situation. As definition of our mission statement, one of the primary duties of a Cass County Sheriff's Office is community protection. These deputies' actions not only demonstrated exceptional bravery and outstanding service in accomplishing the mission of the Sheriff's Office, but also met the highest duty of law enforcement and is to safeguard life. And it was great pleasure and pride that I award the unit citations to deputies Higbee, Jensen, and Holt for their bravery and life-saving compassion." Outstanding achievement award, Patrol Division. Throughout the 2022-2023 years, Deputy Seneca Holt has demonstrated obvious leadership time and time again. In early 2022, Deputy Holt was part of a team that apprehended the armed robbery subject and rendered life-saving care to the suspect. As a peer-to-support team member, she regularly reaches out to peers in need. At the end of 2022, Deputy Holt completed her final steps to become a certified negotiator for SWAT. These skills were also invaluable when Deputy Holt answered a call of a peer in need. This individual was intoxicated, armed with a handgun, and stated they had planned to end their life. Deputy Holt demonstrated the compassion and empathy necessary to help this person see past the moment they were in and decided to put the gun down. This year came with a lot of change for Deputy Holt and her career, including becoming a Nova instructor for 5th grade elementary classes and primary, and primary school resource officer for the alternative high school in the Cass County School District. Through her positive relationships and interaction with the students, the school district sees the value of more deputies in our school. Deputy Holt has lived up to our office values by showing her willingness to have courageous conversations. She has led from the line level and has shown her own ability and desire to be involved in several sensitive areas of our office. Deputy Holt continuously strives to learn new skills and takes on new assignments. Deputy Holt's ability to take on new challenges and exceed them is admirable, and she is truly a great asset to the Cass County Sheriff's Office, the Cass County School District, and the citizens of Cass County, and I'm pleased to award the outstanding achievement award for the Patrol Division to Deputy Seneca Holt." Have Doug Thorson, if he's present, start his way up. I don't see Doug, but I'll, I'll read his award. Outstanding achievement award for Detective Doug Thorson. "The outstanding achievement award is presented to a deputy or staff member that excels in the performance of their duty above and beyond that which is required. Doug Thorson was moved to Investigations in 2019. Since then, he has taken on many different roles and provided the unit with a wealth of knowledge and experience. He is versatile in investigating many types of crime, from financial cases to homicide investigations. In addition, when our office became more involved with ICAC, Internet Crimes Against Children, he volunteered to take on those cases. Very few employees at the Cass County Sheriff's Office have that amount of experience. Instead of lauding that over others, Detective Thorson is humble and willing to share what he knows to help improve others' work. He is an active instructor in multiple disciplines for the Sheriff's Office and a member of the peer support team and a fantastic team player in all that he does. Mark Esper said, quote, 'Stay focused on your mission, remain steadfast in your pursuit of excellence, and always do the right thing,' end quote. Detective Thorson embodies this statement, and the Investigation Unit is a better unit The next outstanding achievement award for the Support Services Division is Kellyanne Kellyanne Levitt has been part of the Cass County Sheriff's Office Investigation Unit since 2019. She has then, since then, she has taken on many different responsibilities and become an integral part of the Investigations Unit. She jumped into her new position with both feet, providing invaluable service to the detectives. She helps with warrant service and document, warrant service and documentation, assisting in recording evidence and records, all evidence submission, ensuring that interview recordings were done and available for submission, assisting in the transcription of reports, sex offender registry, and most recently became a BCI tech for the Sheriff's Office. Kellyanne also looked for ways to help keep the morale of the detective high. She helps plan activities with them and looks after their well-being daily. She provides emotional support when things are hard and many other self-initiated actions that do much to improve the environment in investigations. Perhaps no higher praise has been given to her by her peers than the good-natured title of, quote, 'Junior Detective.' I would have another quote, but I won't say that in public. Kellyanne has taken on her duties enthusiastically and has become a beloved and well-respected member of our team, and I am pleased to award an outstanding achievement award to the Support Services, to Kellyanne Levitt." Okay, if we could have Tim Ramirez and Mike Richardson, please come up. You've heard this already once. These two have already been honored on a statewide level from the Utah Sheriff's Association, and it's certainly fitting that we, we recognize them locally for their actions. So, a Medal of Valor for the Patrol Division goes to Sergeant Tim Ramirez and Deputy Mike Richardson. The Medal of Valor is presented to a deputy for outstanding bravery in the line of duty, where the employees risk loss of life with knowledge of the danger involved, or where a reasonable person would assume life and personal safety was in great danger. On April 19, 2022, Sergeant Ramirez, along with Deputy Richardson, were involved in apprehending an armed robbery suspect. The apprehension involved a pursuit, an officer-involved shooting, and the life-saving care of the offender. While on patrol, a call came out of an armed home invasion robbery. The offender had entered the house armed with a rifle and stole the homeowner's vehicle. Deputies later spotted the vehicle, and a pursuit was initiated. Sergeant Tim Ramirez and Deputy Mike Richardson both knew they were pursuing an armed offender but unaware the offender had been involved earlier in Boxheller County where shots were fired at another person. When the pursuit came to a halt on a dead end, the suspect lunged from the vehicle armed with a rifle, and Sergeant Ramirez, Sergeant Ramirez, recognized the clear danger to the citizens of our county, responded with gunfire. At the time, Deputy Richardson, recognizing the danger to the homeowners, intentionally placed his vehicle between the offender and the house where the pursuit ended. Both of their actions placed them in a dangerous situation and as, as the subject had already shot at others. As defined by our mission statement, one of the primary duties of a Cass County Sheriff's Office is community protection. Sergeant Ramirez's and Deputy Richardson's actions throughout this incident demonstrate our community protection mission. They resolved this dangerous incident and accomplished our mission of the Sheriff's Office, fulfilling their oath to safeguard life. So it is with great pleasure and honor that I get to award the Medal of Valor to Sergeant Tim Ramirez and Deputy Mike Richardson. Okay, last but not least, you guys are going to see this guy walk up here and think, where did you drag him from? We could have Detective Tyson Nielsen, please come up front. You guys want him, or? We're discussing, we're discussing a new dress code policy and laxing things a bit, so we've kind of used him as our, as our example. Deputy of the Year Award goes to Detective Tyson Nielsen. The Deputy of the Year Award is presented to a deputy or other staff member for their exceptional distinguished service during the year. For the past two years, Detective Tyson Nielsen has been part of the Cass Rich Drug Task Force and has represented the Sheriff's Office in exemplary fashion during this time. Detective Nielsen took his role enthusiastically. He has been recognized many times by Logan City Police Department administrators and members for his hard work, dedication to the job. He is available to anyone, no matter who they are, to help them, provide assistance where needed. As a result of his work, there have been several significant drug seizures in the past year. One of note was a recent raid on a large group of homes and outbuildings. Not only were drugs found and seized, but a child found living in horrific living conditions, and as a result of law enforcement involvement and his involvement, was removed and placed into a better place. Several arrests have occurred, removing dangerous individuals and drugs from that area. Lieutenant Brad Frankie with the Drug Task Force stated, quote, 'Agent Nielsen has repeatedly proven to be a talented investigator and an indispensable member for the Cass Rich Drug Task Force. It would have been much easier to move on to easier cases, but he knew the community impact this location and the suspects were having on the area and the difficult road to follow through with.' And I am pleased to award the Deputy of the Year Award to Detective Tyson Nielsen." There's one last one for the Deputy Association President's Award, but before they go, and then we'll conclude when, come on up, Zach, when they're done. I just want to thank the council so much for the support that you've always given our office, especially since I've been the sheriff. It's been nothing but a great relationship and partnership with our council, with our citizens. We, our job, none of us can be successful without the support of the public that we have here in Cass Valley for law enforcement, so thank them. Our partners in public safety, we wear different uniforms, but we all do the same jobs, and neither one of us could be successful without the other. So with that, I'm going to turn some time over to Zach Nielsen. Grow a beard and I'll call you Nelson.
Part of the president of the Deputies Association for Cass County, and this is a special award. This is for Sarah O'Hood. Sarah, come up. This is a presidential award. We talk about leadership as a concept regularly with our staff. When we talk about servant leaders, Sarah comes to mind regularly. We have discussions about work priority and how we need deputies working on deputy relationships and how our support staff can help support what needs to be done. Sarah affectionately signs her emails, Mom. The truth of the matter is, we all wish we had a mom that does as much as Sarah does for Patrol. Our Patrol staff does not have too much of any computer work and the tedious work associated with tracking down videos or uploading reports. They send Sarah an email as she organizes, prepares, and sends off the necessary stuff to the other agencies as needed. Sometimes with processes like this, the tail attempts to wag the dog. Sarah does a great job of ensuring that she is providing great service and support to all the Patrols so they can be out focusing on patrolling. She is a phenomenal person and is exceptionally reliable. Sarah also is a board member of the Deputies Association for the past couple of years. Sarah is very organized, forward-thinking, and those organizational skills are tremendous assets to our association. Sarah is herself, and she isn't shy about it, and that is one reason why she is great to work with. The Cass County's Deputies Association would like to present Sarah O'Hood with a presidential award for the excellence with working with multiple departments, the public, and the work she does for the Cass County Deputies Association. Thank you for all your work."
With that, we can let you have your council meeting back. If I could just have all of our staff just meet out on the front steps, and we'll do pictures and stay there as long as we need to. But thank you very much for letting us crash your council meeting.
Thank you.
Give it a moment here. You notice that there's a little coin there in front of everybody? I was told that if you are buried with honor coins, you get one more step in heaven. In heaven, they say. I need three more just to get it.
Could you guys pass these down for Nolan?
Thank you, Sandy, for doing that.
I can read. I think this is my favorite.
Stand straight up and quit doing what I'm doing.
I was gonna say, I don't think I'd tussle with him.
That clears the room.
Yep, they did.
I know.
Okay, we're going to be a little late, but we're going to actually go to the public hearing first, if we can. Okay.
I walked in the door just as the, the yard.
Have to shut the doors there. Okay, let's go ahead and resume here. That was very nice, very nice. At this point, we are past, actually, the point that we would have a public hearing, so we're going to just jump down to that real quick and then come back to other special items of special interest. So let's go ahead and, is, who is here from Development Services to present? Is he here? Did he get skirted out with the, he might be in the middle of the, yeah.
We've got a new employee in the Sheriff's Department.
There he is. Okay, Tim, could you go ahead and give us just some clarification before we open up the public hearing?
Certainly.
On the Claire and Jennifer Anderson rezone. Is he here? Did he get skirted out with the, he might be in the middle of the, yeah.
We got a new employee in the Sheriff's Department.
There he is, okay. Tim, could you go ahead and give us just some clarification before we open up the public hearing?
Certainly.
On the Claire and Jennifer Anderson rezone.
I'll have that projected in just a moment.
We understand you were like a salmon probably trying to get in here.
Little bit crowded out there, but a great sight to see, indeed. All right, so this is a five acre property proposed for rezone just at the south, call it maybe the south adjacent to the central portion of Nibley that you see highlighted. And as I zoom in, you'll see that the property is adjacent to other vacant or platted for development properties within Nibley City and also that the, the road 1200 West fronting the property is Nibley City Road. And so any services extending to the property from that road and access would be permitted or required to be permitted through Nibley City. Just for a little more context, Nibley City's future land use.
Thank you.
Annexation and future land use area, I'll turn that on just for perspective. And noting that there are some existing storage units in the county just further south and those three properties actually are zoned commercial in the county. And there is some future planning of commercial, but not adjacent to this growing residential area. And I think the applicant was interested to see if there was potentially some way to connect that commercial, the proximity of commercial to a proposed commercial rezone of this property. And after analyzing and also referring back to Nibley City Council for a recommendation, the, the City Council of Nibley has recommended not to support this rezone or to recommend against the rezone, and thus the Planning Commission unanimous recommendation was not to recommend to you, the council, to rezone the property. So that is the, the recommendation of denial and a brief summary for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll come back with questions here in a minute. Let's go ahead and open up for the public hearing for the Claire and Jennifer Anderson rezone ordinance 2023-17. Is there anyone here that would like to come up and speak in behalf or against in any way?
Moved to close public hearing.
Moved, is there a second?
Second. Moved to second and close the public hearing. Knowles in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, appreciate, we'll come back to it here in a minute. We can now, let's go to the items of special interest. We have a presentation honoring Terrell Warner for just a couple of years of service.
I can do my hair.
That's fine. I got a comb. Okay, we will turn it over to you for a second here.
Terrell, you have to come stand up here like the deputies did.
I didn't dress up.
You're always dressed up.
So.
Standing?
I think so. There are a lot of reasons to celebrate Terrell, but I think what, what started the council wanting to celebrate her and it coincided with a big event in Terrell's career in the county. But back in March Chairman Erickson and I received an email from a family member of someone that Terrell helped. And just to kind of provide context, there was an awful, awful situation that happened in Smithfield area back in February where there was a tragedy that led to the death of a woman. The crime, it wasn't a crime scene, but the scene was horrific. And Terrell responded at the request of law enforcement because of the traumatic incident that affected that family. And while she was there, and I'll read from this email, "At some point, Terrell realized that my brother needed medical attention for his mental health and that my niece was not able to care for him on her own. Another ambulance was summoned to transport my brother to Logan Regional Hospital with instructions that he not be released to anyone but his son, who was on his way but would not arrive for more than 11 hours." Some of the things that this family recognized Terrell doing on that night were realizing that their, their brother, their father, their family member was not safe to be left at the home, that the daughter who was in the home had someone to take care of her and be with her during that traumatic time, that a restoration company was contacted to make the home livable again, that the homeowner insurance was contacted and liaised with the restoration company and the homeowners' insurance company, that she got resources to the family that they didn't know about, that they wouldn't have had access to had she not been called. She knew, they recognized her for being, knowing what needed to be done when they were all still reeling from trauma, making sure that they were set up as a family so they could all arrive and take care of each other rather than have to figure all these, these things out on their own, have to deal with the trauma and the logistics. And then, one thing that they, they wanted to make known was because of Terrell's president, presence, experience, and ability to assess my brother is what saved his life that night. It saved our family from a double tragedy because of the mental state he was in and he would have been left there. And then there's, there's something here that is maybe just the most Terrell statement I've ever heard. Because of her knowledge and skills, our situation that was tremendously streamlined and more manageable, she isn't just intelligent and knowledgeable, she truly cares. I cannot find the words to express my gratitude for what she did for my brother, his children, and our entire family that night and in the difficult days that followed. Because of her help, it was bearable. This isn't dramatics, this is fact. Her knowledge, her skills, her intelligence, but what makes Terrell special is she truly cares. I've been on Thursday, I've been in this office for eight years and there isn't another person, and this is no offense to anyone else I work with, that's had more of an impact on my career than Terrell. And I think our office and law enforcement is full of people that probably would say that exact same thing. And that has been for 25 years. Terrell has worked for Cache County, doing the things that I read about day in and day out. I, I read a statistic that the average law enforcement officer is exposed to about 800 traumatic incidents in their career, where the average person is exposed to two or three. I don't know how many Terrell's been exposed to, but it's, I think it's beating the average of the average law enforcement officer easily. And so I just want to, to honor Terrell for her service and the work she does every single day. And I know there are people here from different agencies, from dispatch, from USU, from Logan. And in preparation for today, we sent out an email to, to staff and they put together a book, Terrell Warner, June 10th, 1996 to present for Cache County. So I, I just wanna thank you, Terrell, for everything you do. Our victim services in Cache County is the best in the state and not only do we care for those victims in the criminal justice system, but because of Terrell and the, what the council's done, we're able to care for people who are in crisis when it's, it's not really a, a victim of a crime, but it's a tragedy. And Terrell has led the way in responding to that because there's just not a lot of people with those expertise and, and make sure you refer to her as Dr. Warner because she did complete her PhD recently. So there's, there's just so much incredible about Terrell. I can't, I feel like I'm just up here rambling because there's just so much. But thank you, Terrell, for everything that you do for Cache County and for those that you work with.
Thank you.
On behalf of the council, we want to, we're excited to share in this honor.
Thank you so much.
To support Terrell. And so we would like to give her some flowers and.
And blueberry chocolates?
Yeah, blueberry chocolates. I talked to Dane and he said, well, Terrell probably wouldn't want all of the credit because she has a wonderful department that she works with, everybody in the victim's academic department. So we, we would like you to share that with them.
I will share. And I literally said to her, do I have to share?
Yeah.
I will.
So thank you, Terrell, for everything. We as a council appreciate all that you do.
These are beautiful. Thank you.
Terrell, would you like to just say, we'll give you like 30 seconds of fame and so any famous statement that we can actually for the next 25 years as you work for us?
25 years? You know, I'm, I am beyond words. For those of you that don't know, we started victim services in a kitchen where we had a folding table and two chairs in an old dilapidated building where the county council and the county attorney's office was. And if Don Linton needed his lunch, I had to get up and move. And we finally, when I was eight, nine months pregnant with my son Taylor 26 years ago, moved to the Cache Valley bank. And I look at this and I am so touched and honored. I look at how far victim services has come in this valley and I never, I never in a million years thought I would have the career that I've had. And I'm so grateful for the support and the, I just, I love my law enforcement officers, I love my staff, love, love the attorneys. I am so grateful to the county council and to the community for letting us take a program and run with it. And we've done some amazing things together and I am so grateful for my staff in letting me just say, oh, we're gonna do on-scene response, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. And we just kind of all do it and it's been an amazing career. I, I'm winding down that and I only have a few years left, but I'm gonna go out with a bang. Thank you so much. This is so unexpected. I, I pulled in and I saw this car and it had an A plate on it. And I'm like, oh man, somebody has a car like my husband with an A plate. And then I realized it's him and he said, I'm going to get my ring at Needham's. And I said, oh, that's odd, but okay. And then I came in and I saw Jamie and I thought we were here for Damon. Thank you.
Dr. Warner, it, it does take a person with extremely deep, deep character to take such negativity and negative situations and create such positive things in this world. And we, we do thank you for that.
Thank you. When I was in ninth grade, my school counselor, I wanted to go to college, I knew nothing about college. And I said, I'd like to take a college, like something to prepare me for college. And my very kind school counselor said, I'm gonna put you in typing because you'll make a good secretary. And I said, I really want to go to college. And I look at where I was and where I grew up and the life I had and I, I hope that by the time I'm done with my career, I believe I can honestly say I've made the world a better place. And I really get up every day and I say, I really, I really hope to make an impact in somebody's life the way I wish that it would have been done in mine growing up. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terrell. It took longer than 25 seconds.
JD Gunnel, after all of that, good luck. You better have one heck of a song and dance. But we'll give you the time to go ahead and report on USU Extension Services. Appreciate it.
It's actually very humbling to stand up after all the great people that have been here already. My name's JD Gunnel, I work for USU Extension. I've been a, an extension faculty for nearly 20 years, been in three different counties and by far this is the number one favorite place I've been. Our office consists of about 10 faculty and two staff assistants. We're a smaller office, but hopefully, I, I talked to Micah in the hall last week and I said, hey, we just want to get in front of the new council members, introduce ourselves as part of the county in the next couple of weeks. And he said, well, what are you doing on Tuesday? So, short notice, none of my offices here, they're actually out doing classes and workshops tonight. So I just wanted to introduce the new council members to some of our programming. We've been in the county over 100 years. Our land grant system with Utah State University dates back to Abraham Lincoln's era and 4H being the oldest part of extension, we've been around since 1914. So it's, it's a great party to be, it's a great office to be a part of. I personally do horticulture. I was raised on a dairy farm, but this smells a lot better. And so part of what I do is public outreach. I am a professor with the university, but Councilman Erickson's very quick to inform me that I'm not really a professor, but I'm just for the people and I really appreciate that.
Call you Dr. Gunnel.
No, it's okay. So part of my programming has to do with master gardener volunteers. We train, this year we have 40 people in our class. We expect them to give 40 hours back to community service and so we help facilitate what that looks like. We have the Bridger Park Community Garden that Logan City asked us to help with. You can see some of the numbers with those volunteers, we've, we've gotten over 1,600 hours given back to the community. This, just today, actually, we were planting 12 new fruit trees at that community garden. So I had to bring an extra pair of clothes so I wasn't muddy. We were given a $10,000 donation last fall to build a really nice pergola as part of that garden, I'll have a picture later. But we're able to supply growing space for 60 urban families that don't have land otherwise. We also work with the local green industry in offering public garden classes and this year we are poised to beat that 360 participant number handily. Justin Clausen is our agriculture agent. He works really closely with the farmers and ranchers in the area. His expertise is in crops. He has garnered international fame already this spring with melting snow using biochar and different humates as we've had way too much snow, but it's turned out to be a good thing overall. He teaches crop schools to those producers, beef education series, and he and I tag team on pesticide applicator trainings where we provide CEUs or continuing education credits for the pesticide applicators so that they can stay safe in the community as well. 4H, as I mentioned, is the oldest arm of extension. In Cache County, we have over 58 chartered clubs servicing 1,500 youth and we're very proud of our team. We have a team of four very dedicated coordinators. They each focus on different areas. Elise Simpkins is our newest member. She handles all of volunteer development. Jenny Curl does the STEM or STEAM programming. Courtney Freeze does anything with hooves and hair. And then Blake Clark does all of our outdoor adventures, shooting sports, and those kind of things. We've really focused a lot on our livestock and in offering more education for the kids and, and learning how to raves the livestock and nutrition. This last county fair, we reached nearly a million dollars in sales at our livestock. And the one great thing about the Cache County Fair is it's you guys' fair and we just show up and help. And that is not the same in every county. So you guys should give yourself huge kudos of keeping the fair alive. We are hands down the best fair in Utah. One highlight this last year, our shooting sport heritage. One highlight this last year, our shooting sport heritage, shooting club, won the first place nationally, and so Blake Clark took a team back into the Midwest to compete. Our Cache Makers Club, which is a partnership with BTEC, we have over 100 STEM kits that we've offered to the community. That started with COVID and has just gained traction that a lot of homeschool groups take advantage of, and we are in every school within the Cache County and Logan School District with after-school programs. Home and Community, Jenna Dykman is our FCS agent. She focuses on anything you can eat, preserve, or spend. And so, she works a lot with the, the grade schools, ages five through 13. She's developed a Level Up program that focuses on physical, emotional, and mental wellness, and she's reached over 350 youth just this last year. We do a lot of free home canner testing in our office. It's like a rotating door on Mondays because we do it for free, and she's also answered over 150 phone calls of people that we tend to believe would kill themselves otherwise. It's interesting, some of the, the canning calls we get, and people wanting to know if their 40-year food storage is still edible.
It is.
That's moonshine.
This explains a lot, Nolan. She's also a registered dietitian, so she teaches a lot of diabetes classes that have really gained a lot of popularity. And one of the highlights is, is we're out in the community serving the, the citizenry. We talked as an office how we can actually pay back to our county friends and family. And so, we've offered our Lunch and Learn series where, once a month, we work with Amy and her office through HR, and we do a lot of classes just for the county employees. And mark your calendar, because May 24th, we're doing a tomato tantrum class, and we will have 300 tomatoes, starts to give out to
How did you want?
Our county friends.
I think Nolan's going to be first in line.
Well, that's not the salsa showdown. We still have to schedule that, and I'm sure Nolan will find some way to miss it. But we're really glad to have her. Tim Cady in our office is a new addition. Historically, Extension's been all about farmers, so plows and cows. But with recent events in society, our dean and vice president for Extension thought it was very, a very, a good idea to look at mental wellness, suicide prevention, and opioid abuse. And so, we hired a statewide team of specialists, and Tim Cady heads up that team, and we get him in our county. And they do a ton of really great things. He will never admit this, but he has done over two dozen trainings on Narcan. We taught, we heard that with the sheriff's office earlier, but he has been able to single-handedly save 12 lives through administering Narcan, and, and offers those trainings to any public entity that wants to know about it. He works really closely with the health department, and you'll see later that a lot of legislative and state support behind these programs. He's brought in nearly $3 million just himself in grants. Other programming, we have a diverse community, and as such, we have a federal mandate to reach out to all. We have two very adept Latino coordinators. They are Create Better Health Utah ambassadors, which used to be the food stamp program. As citizens of Utah get their food stamps, they have a mandate to be educated and take certain classes, and these two ladies in our office go into people's homes and help them learn how to cook basic recipes and save money as a family. We also have been tasked these last couple of years working with the refugees, whether from Somalia or Afghanistan, and so we work with the Crick Refugee Garden. And the family center this next year will be building a bunch of raised garden boxes down on the island, by the island market, so we're really excited about those things. These are just some highlights from the last county fair, and I will tell you, just with the livestock alone, we are poised to blow these numbers out of the water. We're going to have a really great county fair this year, and we're really excited. Just to end, I just wanted to thank the county council for their continued support. We receive about a quarter of a million dollars from the Cache County Council to have our faculty here, and just to show you the return of investment on what we can bring to the community. This is the pergola I mentioned at the community garden. This was provided by the Bear River Health Department and Logan City Police. And so, we are just extremely grateful to be here. I love telling people that I am a professor of the people, and we are here just to serve the community. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you have, or I'll sit down.
What questions do you have?
No questions for me, but just the extreme thanks. I think the Extension Office does an extreme amount of good for the county and for the people, so thank you, and please let your staff know that. I've used them. I grew up on a farm, but I still have questions, and so I've called, so very helpful, and it's
Thank you.
Very good partnership.
Appreciate you. Thanks, J.D.
Okay, let's go ahead and, I guess, the tax cell report, I guess, is
I'm actually doing that.
Oh, you're going to? Okay, could you?
I'm going to call my tax out.
Please state your name.
Because we have good news.
I have great news. So, as of May 3rd, there is no delinquent taxes, so we, we canceled our tax out. Diana Schaefer and Craig McAllister, they did their super sleuthing and were able to find the owner, and we're all, we're all good, so. I wish I could say I did some super sleuthing too, but our tax professionals did a good job.
Five years, they couldn't find her?
Five years, and then they went all the way back, like, 2013, to finally figure out where she is, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
The federal lien still exists, though, on that poor property, and that
Unfortunately, yeah.
She'll have to take care of that, so, well, that's good news, and appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Pending action, let's go, we'll go in order 10A. Amending 17.02 of the Cache County Code, amending 2.20.050 of the Cache County Code to change the appeal authority. Taylor?
Good evening. Thank you for having me again. So, you may remember this from last month, where we are creating an appeal authority that is required under Utah Code for our recorder. We have to create an appeal authority by the 1st of July, and we figured while we're tinkering with an appeal authority, we might as well improve the other appeal authority that we have in the county for land use, which is the Board of Adjustment, and go to a land use hearing officer. We, just to give you a brief rundown of how we arrived at that conclusion, the Utah Trust is one of the entities that recommends that. Many other counties have also gone to that model of a hearing officer, and the property, the Utah State Property Ombudsman's Office also recommends going to that model. So, we decided that we could present that before you and see if you'd be interested in that. So, the last time we spoke, there were some concerns expressed about qualifications and how we know who's going to be qualified to be a land use hearing officer. And if you would go to your packet, page 53, some of those concerns have been addressed.
53, 20?
Okay, so you might have, so yes, this would be page 14.
Thank you for not giving us 53 pages.
Yes, I'm looking, I'm looking at the full packet, so this would be page 14. So, we spoke about qualifications here in the ordinance. It specified that the land use hearing officer is appointed by the county executive with the advice and consent of county council, and the executive shall appoint more than one hearing officer. And we discussed that was for the reason of preventing conflicts of interest in the case of an appeal. And a hearing officer may serve a maximum of two consecutive full terms of five years each, and shall either be law-trained or have significant experience with land use laws and the requirements and operations of administrative hearing processes. So, this outlines what type of person we're looking for, for this administrative, this land use hearing officer. And then, section three, conflict of interest and removal, that requires that a hearing officer cannot participate in an appeal in which they have a conflict of interest. And if they are removed, they may be removed by the executive with advice and consent of the county council. So, those are some of the concerns you illustrated last time. It was also brought up, concerns about compensation, but we decided not to put that in the ordinance. Compensation is a, it's a moving target, and putting that in the ordinance would make it difficult to contract effectively. For example, for our, with our Development Services Director, he's required under the code, we have one under the code, but his compensation isn't spelled out in the code. We just offer what's, what's mark, what the market price is, so. Questions, concerns?
Is the five years typical in other counties?
Yes, that, it's, I mean, counties have differing policies. Some have no limit. Some like to just keep, make sure that that structure doesn't become ossified, that we get new people in, so we're not having the same person review every single thing over a long period of time, so.
Some rotate it between the, the three lawyers they have in the county?
Right. So, yeah, some counties don't have very many attorneys, and so it makes it difficult, so.
Two questions on me.
Yes.
When it talks about a conflict of interest, that's self-removal by the attorney? If he's got a conflict with the hearing, then he does that, nobody in the county does? It's got to be his call. See what I mean on that?
Yes, and attorneys are bound by the rules of professional conduct to avoid conflicts of interest. This isn't exactly the same thing, but self-dealing, if someone does allege a conflict of interest, then they know that they would be removed for that by the executive, or if a complaint would be, if a complaint is made, so, yes.
I'm not talking about removal of office, though. I'm just talking about that particular hearing.
Yes, so, so if they have an interest in, in the matter before them, then they would not be able to be the judge in that matter, for the administrative
They have to self-dealing do that, right?
That's correct.
I had a question about that, Taylor. The appointment with the advice and consent, that seems consistent with state law. Part about removal with advice and consent, I'm not sure if I've seen that before. Is, is there anywhere else where that exists?
I, I haven't verified that specific provision of, of removal. That was
I can speak to that.
Yeah, Dane, please.
So, this is a legislative function, so if this was a purely executive function, then advice and consent upon removal is not allowed. But where this is serving a function of the, our land use authority and appeal authority, it's not a purely executive function. It's actually a function that's being delegated by the county council, whether that's through a, through a Board of Adjustments or through a hearing officer, and that's why it's not inappropriate to have advice and consent upon removal. Okay, thanks for answering that.
One more question. On page 14, qualification two, if you go to the very second page of this document, bottom of it, the director must be appointed by the Cache County Executive, but then it says nothing about the council. Does that red line take in place there, or do you see where I'm at?
I'm looking, so, page 14?
Page 14, you got to two, where it says, appointed by the executive with consent of the council.
Yes.
Then you go to page two of the document, down at the bottom. The director must be appointed by the Cache County Executive with consent of the council. Is that talking about the department director for
That's correct. So, when it's, when it references the director, that is the director of Development Services. When it references the land use hearing officer, that's the land use hearing officer that we're talking about.
I think I can answer that question. That portion of the code is not being proposed to be changed at this moment?
That's correct.
But the requirement for advice and consent for that appointment exists elsewhere in code.
Okay, I just wondered if it should be there or where, so.
We can put it in.
One question I have that might be, just as a point of clarification. You said, many counties have gone to a hearing officer as opposed to a board. What are the advantages?
Well, so, a land use hearing officer, so you kind of have to look at the structure of what steps of land use they address. So, you know, in the case of when you're making broad policy, that's a legislative function that happens at your level, at the Cache County Council. And then our director, they're making administrative decisions. They're applying what you, the rules that you create to each individual situation. The land use hearing officer is a quasi-judicial application, so they are reviewing administrative decisions. And so, the advantages
Judgment does the same thing.
That's correct. So, the advantage to having someone who is a land use hearing officer is, when you're making those quasi-judicial decisions, when you're reviewing administrative decisions, you need to look at, the person reviewing them has to review them dispassionately. They have to review the text of the law and whether the law was applied correctly. Many people get upset and confused, for example, when they show up to the planning commission, because that's an administrative function, and they're just applying the rules. And so, they may come and comment on whether or not a CUP should be extended to a property owner, and then, you know, they hear public comment, and they say, well, sorry, the law says we have to give it to them, and so then the people don't feel necessarily heard. The same type of thing happens in a Board of Adjustments, where people feel that, well, you know, we have this board, and they should respond to us, and they should listen to us, but in reality, the land use hearing officer's judgment is significantly constrained. They're just reading the law and how it applies to that particular situation. And so, having one person versus a Board of Adjustments that is not necessarily an expert, that they don't have the same training, that opens up, there's a greater risk that decisions will be made, those judicial decisions will be made, not according to the law, that they'll be arbitrary and capricious. And when someone, when arbitrary decisions are made, that opens the county up for legal liability and to be turned over later to district court. So, the advantage of having a land use hearing officer is those choices are typically made more dispassionately, they're made with a better record, and they're made with more reference to what the law actually says versus what five people may come to the conclusion on, on their own. So, if that, if that answers your question, there, so there, the advantages there, increased clarity, decreased risk of litigation, more predictability, in your answers to appeals, efficiency. We currently have one appeal that's been pending for several months because we were unable to form a quorum for a couple of reasons, scheduling challenges, and also being able to keep, keep up with appointing people to the Board of Adjustment, so there's an efficiency win there as well.
It costs more.
It costs a little bit more, but if you decrease your risk in litigation, that's, the dividends pay off.
I was talking to some other people that have been involved on the Board of Adjustments for a lot of years, and, and I think there was only two instances that it even went to district court, but then was still upheld, the decision of the Board of Adjustment. So, I don't, I don't know of any that we've really had that have had that big of an impact, you know, that, you know, that really cost us anything.
Well
I'm not saying it
It only takes, it only takes, it only takes one.
I know times are changing, but I just hope that we don't have that attitude.
And I, I think we've got along, the reason why Cache County's had been able to get along for so long, years past other counties who had to, had to abandon this form earlier, I think it's, Cache County's a special place, and we have a civic spirit, and there's a lot of people willing to participate and put forward their best judgment. And I think, but, conversely, as Cache County grows, as it becomes more complex, you're not, you're not so often dealing with houses being built in prime land where it's easy to determine whether or not it should be allowed. More people are building on the bench, more More people are building on the bench, more people are building in steep slopes, the situations are becoming more and more complex as we have more and more people in the valley, and the prime land is already gone, it's taken, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Taylor.
Thank you.
That is pending action.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three dash thirteen and ordinance amending seventeen point zero-two of the Cache County Code and amending twenty point two oh point zero five zero of the Cache County Code to change the appeal authority.
Can I ask a question here?
Uh, let's get a second first.
I'll second it.
Move and seconded, that we, uh.
Pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
Is there discussion? Go ahead, Nolan.
Back to page two, under being appointed by the executive and being ratified or done with the county council, I just wondered if that should be in there. I know it's in the other code, but here, this is going into, so.
Would you like to amend the motion?
What's the council's thoughts?
I, I agree.
Which paragraph are you talking about?
Page, on page two.
Page two, item two, at the very bottom.
I'm agreeable with Nolan.
Okay, and I would like to amend the motion that with, that being appointed by Cache County Executive is also, um, what do I want to say, ratified or?
Subject to advice and consent.
Advice and consent of the county council, thank you. Is that okay?
Yeah, I, I would support that.
Is there a second on that one?
I'll second now.
Move and seconded, we amend the main motion, that we add, uh, on page two, the director appointed by the Cache County Council with advice and consent of the Cache, excuse me, Cache County Executive with advice and consent of the Cache County Council. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I just want to clarify, we're talking about the director of the land use authority, not the director of community development services, because I thought that that's...
It is the director of the development services.
Development services. So we've already established how he's appointed by the executive and our advice and consent, is, is this just the same? We're just, we're just clarifying and making it the same.
Just restating it.
Okay, that, I wanted to just clarify.
Let's make sure that it's in here so things don't change down the road.
Good, perfect.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor of the amendment to the main motion, that we add the words with advice and consent on that page two, of down at the bottom, number two, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a second? Or should be, all those opposed, aye, in hearing none, proceed to, on, uh, the main motion as amended, all those in favor of the main motion as amended, that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. Is there, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Let's go on to the initial proposal, is there any action that needs to be taken on an initial propose, proposal for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen?
I move that we follow the planning and zoning commissions.
And waive the rules?
And waive the rules, and deny.
Second.
Said that.
Move and seconded that we waive the rules and pass ordinance twenty twenty-three and, and support the denial of our Cache County Development Services. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, let's go down to regarding the office of the district attorney, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, Dr. Murray.
So.
Sneaking in.
So this came up as a result of the audit, um, recommendations by the state auditor's office. Included in that was, um, it was pointed out, um, one by my staff and two by the auditor's office, that deputy county attorneys under the Cache County Code, um, two sixteen zero six zero, deputy county attorneys in career status must be full-time employees and shall not engage in the private practice of law, or without, shall they receive any fee for any legal service rendered to any person, corporation, partnership, or other legal entity. Um, but under Utah Code, seventeen eighteen A three oh one, a county attorney may serve as a part-time employee and engage in the private practice of law. So, talking with staff, um, with council members and others, what's good for the gander is good for the goose. So, the, the way that we could, um, require the county attorney to be engaged in the full-time practice of law and not engage in the outside practice of law is set forth under seventeen eighteen A three oh one, which states, a district attorney is a full-time employee of the prosecution district and may not engage in the private practice of law. So what we've proposed in this ordinance is to create a single-county prosecution district in Cache County, and that district raises, is this a taxation district? This is not for taxation purposes, this does not change any tax code, um, it's a legal term of art, um, related to prosecution. And that would create a s, single-county prosecution district, and then combine the office of county attorney and district attorney, because under Utah law, you could potentially create an office of district attorney, which handles the criminal prosecution, and a separate office of county attorney, which serves as the legal counsel for the county. And those offices can be combined, just like our clerk auditor's office, into a county attorney, district attorney's office. That's how our office currently functions. So, the, the practical effect of this is to require whoever is serving as county attorney slash district attorney to engage in the full-time practice of law for Cache County and not to engage in the private practice of law. And just telling you, as serving as interim county attorney, I don't know how someone can manage an office of thirty-plus people, the, um, oversee the management of victim services with, and the CJC, and our civil division, and our criminal division, and our investigations, and not work full-time and have something going on the side, and do it adequately, because, um, we have great leadership, but we, we have meetings every single week to make sure we're all on the same page, and no one's, um, lacking for anything, and, um, so, that, that's going to be my recommendation to the council, is to pass this ordinance, create the office of district attorney, combined with the office of county attorney, um, moving forward. And where this is a, we have an empty office right now, this would go into effect the first Monday after the next general election. So whoever is, is running understands that, um, when they're elected, that's the, the office that they're going into, is that combined office, rather than the county attorney's office as it's currently organized. Is there any questions from council?
When the elections do run, I just, as a voting person, and if I come in and I'm saying, "Am I voting for district attorney or county attorney?", I'm just hoping that we make it clear, there's some way of making that clear for constituents and their citizens who are vote, do you understand? I, I mean, I'm reading that on page two that's in there, and that helps, but still I wonder the clarification as that goes forward.
And that, I think that would be on the, on the ballot, and that would come from the clerk's office.
We can put it on the ballot, the county slash district, whatever we want on the ballot, we can say it.
And, just, just like the clerk auditor position is clear on the ballot, that this is the clerk and the auditor's position, um, and, and frankly, most citizens that we interact with, especially on the criminal side, always already refer to us as the district attorney, because that's what they know from TV shows and things. That's, that's where everyone learns about the law, right? It's like, uh, Law and Order, so, I, I, I hope there won't be too much confusion there. I think, go, the, the term district attorney actually rec, reflects, just to the general public, the criminal aspect, which is, um, we have all of our victim advocates, are, the CJC and all of the prosecutors, um, assigned to our office, that's a big part of what our office does, so hopefully, this, maybe will even help clarify that you're voting for a public safety position, um, and the county's legal counsel.
I have a question, Dane, so would that election be this November? Would there be?
It'll, it'd be the next general election, so it'll be twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, so it wouldn't be for a while.
So, when, when John Luthy didn't take office, um, because he was appointed to the bench, there was a vacancy with more than two years remaining in his term, and that's, for the county attorney, it's a little bit different than other, um, county officers, so, instead of just having an appointment by the, the party, um, it, there's an interim appointment by someone who has to be a deputy, um, county attorney or district attorney, and then in the next general election, it's an open election, and then after that election, you serve the next two years of the remaining term, and then you run again in twenty twenty-six on the same, um, pe, uh, cycle as the other county officers.
So that means you're still, you will be the interim county attorney until the general election in twenty twenty-four?
Yes, until someone is elected and fills the seat as the, as the county attorney, or if this was passed, as the county attorney slash district attorney.
So there'll be one person that does both?
Yes, so it's a, it's a combined office, so our.
I was thinking we were adding a new person, you would do one thing and they would just do the district, okay, sorry.
No, no, so it, there would be no functional change to how our office is, is managed, it would, it would, the, really, the only change was just to require that the, um, person who's serving as county attorney is engaged full-time in employment for, for Cache County and doesn't have outside employment, um, practicing law.
Okay, and it's also called the county district attorney?
Yeah, and, and so, it's clarified in the code, um, we, I, we didn't want to go through and change every single mention of deputy county attorney to deputy district attorney, because you might be serving in, everyone would be serving in both roles. Everyone in our office, even our civil division, at some point in time, works on criminal cases, and the same is, that we have, um, county attorneys who are assigned to the, the criminal division, who assist on civil cases when there's a need. So, it, it's just clarified in here under, um, two sixteen zero nine zero, under this section, deputy district attorneys may be referred to as deputy district attorney, deputy county attorney, or deputy attorney. Um, and then one other thing that we did clarify is, just to, um, for both the, the county attorney and for deputy county attorneys, um, define the practice of law consistent with the Utah bar, um, and then exempted from that, because it's exempted on, on the, from the bar that pro bono work performed consistent with the rules of professional conduct is not the practice of law. And then, does not include work for registered nonprofits, as long as that's being disclosed and it isn't a conflict of interest. We don't want to take away the ability to, to volunteer from someone just because they're working as a deputy county attorney. And then, it is clarified, just to be compliant with federal law, that members of the Utah National Guard, Utah Air National Guard, um, and, or any reserve branch of the military, we have two in our office that currently serve, that they're, they are practicing law for a fee for another entity, but it's for the military. And then, someone who's cross-deputized as a special assistant U.S. attorney to take cases that occur in Cache County and prosecute them federally, um, we've had de, deputized special assistant United States attorneys in the past, and we hope to in the future, that that, and that, that isn't for a fee, that's just part of their duties, but that isn't the practice of law that would violate anything in our code.
Another question?
Yes.
Do you see the day that you're going to need both, both a deputy attorney and, I mean, a district attorney and a county attorney?
I sure hope not. I.
I'm just saying, because if so, wouldn't that put the fact that the county attorney could still go out and get a job elsewhere, or the fact that we combined the district and county attorney together stops that from ever on again?
Uh, uh, the, the council could, at some point, decide we want to separate these offices, and then the county attorney under Utah law could engage in the private practice of law. If they're combined into one office, that, that prevents that.
Okay, that's.
I, I can't, I can't imagine, um, I can't imagine a situation where we're big enough that it would be necessary to separate those offices, where it's, there's, there's so much interplay between the civil things that happen, um, so, so, civil asset forfeitures that occur, they're so closely related to our criminal case, where someone has a bunch of cash on them because they're a drug dealer, um, there's a lot of cooperation there, it doesn't make sense to, to separate those offices. And then just the, just the, the brain power that you get from your, your civil attorneys assisting with, with criminal cases, sometimes they come from a different perspective, I think there's a lot of value that's added, having those all in one place. And I can't imagine Cache County growing to, it, definitely not in my career, I can imagine it being so big and unwieldy that it doesn't make sense to have a criminal and civil divisions within the same office.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions.
Um, Mr. Zook raised his hand.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, uh, outside employment prohibition, so did you say that this only applies to outside employment as an attorney?
So, that's what is currently, um, prohibited by our code for deputy county attorneys and for the, under Utah law. Other outside employment would be governed by our, our policies in-house, that say you can engage in outside employment if it doesn't interfere with your, your work for the county, and so that.
If one of your attorneys is working as a roofer on the weekend, there's no issue with that?
No, no, this would be, what, what this is trying to prevent is, there, there's so many conflicts, even if you're not engaging in criminal defense work, which you obviously can't do under the rules of professional conduct, if you're engaging in the private practice of law, um, there are conflicts that could be, arise that your client is Cache County, um, if you're employed as an attorney, any interests that you might be representing outside of that, could definitely be a conflict, um, and, we, we did have, uh, the state auditor's office, we, we've had within our county issues arise, um, that were, that alleged in that audit, that, um, this would just make it clear that that is, not only is that prohibited from our, our deputy county attorneys, which has been the case since the, the nineteen eighties, when this was enacted, but also the, the county attorney, um, is held to that same standard.
And then I had a question about the nonprofit work, does that apply only to pro bono nonprofit work, or would that apply to paid nonprofit work?
So that, I, I guess that, that could be clarified, that it's, um, unpaid work, pro, pro bono work for nonprofit organizations, um, rather than just for individuals.
And, uh, I know this doesn't, wouldn't go into effect until twenty twenty-five, so a little over a year and a half now, but are you aware of any of your employees that would be affected by this and need to terminate some outside employment?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
Thank you.
I, and I, I, just to, when we started talking about that, there's, what if I went and volunteered for this, what if I did this, what if I started my own nonprofit, um, am I going to be prevented from doing the legal work for that nonprofit? So I, I can't, this isn't, so I can make a buck on the side being the nonprofit's attorney, so, and if there's a clarification that needs to be made there, I think that, that would be something that can be added, but, we, I didn't want to restrict our deputy attorneys from being able to volunteer for, to do good in our community, um, that's, in a way that's not making, just to make a buck on the side.
Other questions, comments?
Well, just one quick clarification, is it by code that we have to wait until the election to create this position and combine them, or could, why isn't we, why couldn't we do so now?
So, in, in, yes, it's by state code, so if it's enacted, the offices are combined, you create a prosecution district, it can't go into effect until the, at noon on the first Monday of January after the next general election. The other changes, um, and I guess that's, that's one thing that, um, that could be changed, some of this clarification of the practice of law, that could go into effect fourteen days after, um, it's passed, but as far as creating a, a in-county prosecution district, combining the office of district and county attorney, that cannot go into effect until, um, Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-five at noon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would entertain a waive the rules motion, or if you want to wait till in a couple weeks, that's fine, too, we'll keep it on the books.
Well, I think he's done a pretty good job of explaining what we need to do, I don't, I can't see a reason to not do that, so I will make a motion and waive the rules for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, and ordinance amending chapter two point one six of the Cache County Code regarding creating the office of the. and ordinance amending chapter 2.16 of the Cache County Code regarding creating the office of the district attorney.
I'll second it, that we waived the rules in pass ordinance 2023-18, amending chapter 2.16 Cache County Code, creating the office of district attorney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I have had Senator Hilliard was, been waving to me just for a second. Is there anyone here that would like to hear from him? Or do we just go ahead and, is it pretty pertinent what you're going to say? Or you're going to talk about the RAPS tax?
Then I'd say there's reason to listen.
Okay, then would you please come up here? We'll, we'll take the prerogative and listen to that. I enjoy listening to you anyway. But no, whoa, whoa, $300 an hour will give you 30 seconds.
I'm retired, I don't charge anymore. Dane has a very difficult job, and I want to support him in the, in the difficult. I'll talk about that when I meet with you about the delegations of duties. But two questions came into my mind as I was hearing this. What if the, say the county councilman in Box Elder County is charged with a crime? And the Box Elder County Attorney's Office says, wait a minute, I'm too closely connected. So they call the Cache County Attorney's Office and said, can you assign a deputy over here to handle that case? And so he's now going out of the county, working, maybe he's being paid by the county, maybe he's being paid by Box Elder. The other question I raise is you have a, really a complicated law case. Maybe it's tax. And so you want to bring an outside counsel, who's really an expert in that tax area, that you need there. So I assume that that attorney, when they come in, you'd have to deputize them, but they would have other outside work. So I would want to make sure in your clearing, you clarify those two areas, that that doesn't violate the law. That's, that was the questions I had.
Good point. I asked that question to Mica about whether it was private practice or dealing with public.
So I, if I can address both of those. In our, in our county code, and it's not being changed because of this, let me pull that county code up. So under 216-060, subsection B, and this is being left in place, this section does not apply to special deputy county attorneys retained on a fee basis to render services in connection with a single case or specific cases. So we have litigation going on in the county right now, where they, we've retained outside counsel. They've been deputized as a, as a county attorney. That's the section that they're, they're falling under. So for Senator Hilliard's question there, as to if we have a complicated tax issue, it still gives us the authority to, to retain counsel outside of our deputy attorneys and still be a, they're a private attorney. They have their own practice, they don't have to give up their practice just to represent Cache County.
If I could just add, that's reflected in the Utah code as well, if you're a Cache County attorney or a district attorney, you can cross-deputize in specific cases.
And, and then as to the, for, for Box Elder County and other counties, we actually handled a case for Box Elder County on a conflict for them, just this past week. They've handled, they're handling a conflict case for us as we speak. We don't, never in my career have I been aware where they've paid. It's been mostly, we, it's on just a cooperation basis, where their county attorney calls me and says, hey, we have a case that involves a, a family member of someone in our office, and we agree to handle that for them in return when we have an issue. They've handled it for us. We've never had an incident where, I, I'm not aware of other counties where they're, they're receiving payment just personally for going and covering something. It's being ordered by the county attorney. So hopefully that answers your question.
I was going to use the example of a county council member being arrested, and then you couldn't charge him. But you, you have that reciprocity, so. Nolan wouldn't be, he's my friend.
I, I hope those, that answered your questions.
I might be topping on some of that moonshine one time, DUI, so I don't know. But I did have that question to Mica, because of, like, if we went back to our counsel representing a city or whatever else, and it seemed to be defined as that wasn't a private practice, that was-
That's still going through the county. Everything is, you know, contract, everything you do is still through the county.
If the work is for, so say, for example, we have a contract with Logan City, provide their municipal prosecution services. That, that money is paid to Cache County. We assign a deputy county attorney to work doing that prosecution, but they are paid by Cache County. They're not paid by Logan City, they're not paid through-
Yes, so it's not a private payment to them?
It's, the payment is not going directly to the attorney, which is critical.
As long as it's, they're being paid, as long as the money comes to Cache County, goes through our normal budgeting process, and they are being paid the same as any other county attorney, that, that's fine. If I go and decide I want to go work at Senator Hilliard's firm part-time, and they, they're, they want to hire me, I can't go and do that and represent clients and also represent Cache County.
Thanks, Mr. Hilliard, appreciate your input.
Okay, we have a-
Questions, but I'll keep my motion on the table.
We have a motion in a second, and we're ready to vote. If that's all the discussion, all of us in favor of that ordinance 2023 by waiving the rules, dash 18, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go on to 11C, it is. Consideration and approval of the RAPS board decisions. And I know Alma is not here tonight, he is on vacation. And, but we brought this up, that we did have a little computer glitch. There is some available funding there to be allocated as such. I know the, the RAPS committee went diligently through everything, that two-foot book applications. And, and they was, it was really, it was a great process, and it worked out great, and I thought they did wonderful. But there is still some money that could be appropriated for increases or changes, or whatever it may be. But have you looked, how has it gone through, when you've looked at the decisions themselves?
We kept money in the RAPS just for-
We do.
And so, wondering why the point out is so heavy this time.
Well, it's just a matter of what we thought we had left over for this year. We brought that into the amount. We brought that into the amount this year, which increased it overall. And then we tried to have that little carryover for projects that do come up for some, one reason or another during the year. But again, there was a computer glitch, so that when we went through and as it calculated everything out, there was a, a little bit higher remaining balance than what we had thought. Go ahead, Mr. Zook.
Mr. Zook, if you'd like, I could give a brief overview of some of those numbers. The beginning amount that we had available was just over 4.4 million to be able to disperse, based on how much we received over the past year, as well as some fund balance left over from previous years. So that 4.4 million was available, however, we received about 5.9 million in requests. And so our RAPS committee met just over two weeks ago and did a fantastic job. I, I just want to thank them again for all the work. These are the binders. This is not a copy of this binder, it's, it's this one plus this one. More than seven, well, 79 applications, more than 1,200 pages of applications and background information that they reviewed to narrow it down to what should be recommended. So based on their review and their multi-hour meeting, they gave an initial recommendation that would have spent about 3.3 million of that 4.4. As the chairman mentioned, that, those numbers were being calculated on the fly in that meeting, and there was a, a computer glitch. And so the numbers were not correct that were being shared with the committee. They thought they didn't have very much left to spend, and so they stopped spending. After that meeting, it was, it was figured out that they still had around a million dollars available to spend. And so you have, you have a document before you that shows the initial 3.3 million in recommendations. And then there was another document, and as well as a couple of emails that were put forth by the committee with additional suggestions on, on how more money could be spent, in addition to that initial 3.3 million dollar recommendation. My recommendation for the council tonight is that you give any feedback that you might have on the initial recommendations, the subsequent recommendations, or any other recommendations that you might have tonight, and give those to us, and have the staff put all of those numbers into one spreadsheet for you, so we can know, and you can know exactly what you're voting on and how much that is. But we, so the committee did not meet again after that initial meeting. There were just some emails that went around with some suggestions. And, and so because of that, there's an initial recommendation, plus some email recommendations. And I anticipate there might be some discussion tonight about further recommendations for changes. So, so that would be my, my recommendation to you is, give us all of your feedback. Let us know what you want to do with all of those. We'll put it all in one organized document. Make sure all the numbers add up and bring it to you next time. Just so you know, based on the, the county code, the council is supposed to authorize this by your last meeting in May. So you do have one more meeting that you could meet and review this.
I, I think that makes sense.
And this is typical.
Yeah.
We have done this before, and, because you know, that's, that's a lot to digest in the initial one, when you see all that. And plus, that gives time for the lobbyists to, to let, to let you know how they feel, and they're good at that. And so, but, you know, as you dig into it further, and, but are there some that you'd like to bring up?
There's two things that jumped out at me. The first thing is that they cut back the request for ZUTA significantly. And RAPS, Z means zoos. And, and so I have a question of that. And then the second thing I've- try, tried to express my concern is that, that those entities that bring visitors to the valley, who spend money and create the, the tax revenues that funds RAPS, they're the ones that we should be most focused on, I think, in, in helping them continue to provide the services they provide that brings visitors into our, into our valley. And, you know, it's great to help small town build a splash pad or something like that. But that, that's not, that doesn't bring tax revenues in to help fund these things. And so I would ask us to seriously consider increasing the amounts to these entities that bring visitors to, to the valley and that stay in the hotels and, and eat at the restaurants and, and buy the gas and everything else. That, they're the ones, that, they're the ones that pay for us to be able to do these things. So anything that we can do to keep these entities functioning and alive is a benefit to us, so that we do have money to pay for a splash pad out in some small community.
ZUTA actually got the same, same amount as they did last year, even though their request was a lot more. A lot more, their request was just higher, so.
Yeah, I, I had some visits from, from them, and they, they have a lot of issues they're trying to, to work through, so that they can become a certified zoo. And they have some things that they have to upgrade in order to do that. So that's the reason for their higher request. And Utah Festival Opera, we've got some great people here interested in this, and they bring in substantial monies to Cache County. And there was a, a study done two or three years ago of the amount of money that, that is spent here from people who come to this nationally recognized venue. And it's not, it isn't just a local venue, it's not just a state venue, it's, they're nationally recognized. And so providing additional funding to them for marketing or whatever else to bring more people in, I think is money well spent.
Other comments, other questions?
I agree with what Carl said. I think those are things we should, that they bring the money in, those are things we should support. If there's more money to be given.
Can I ask a question? Do you have a specific amount that you're proposing if you change it? If, if so, that would be helpful to us, if we're going to put together a new spreadsheet for you to review next time.
I don't at the moment, but I, I can-
You send that to Alma?
And there was one more number I, I didn't mention. So I, I mentioned the numbers, but I didn't do the math for you. So it's approximately 800,000 that's still available to distribute, so.
Does that leave any in?
No.
I think we need to-
Yeah, that's a good point. What the, what the council has done in the past is left between 200 and 400,000 dollars as a cushion in case something else comes up. So you, you may not want to spend all that.
I would propose we still consider that. That's a wise thing, we don't know what's going to be here, so.
So will the RAPS committee meet again and finalize this, or we're not doing it right now, they're going to-
We, we could, if, if you'd like us to, we, we could do that. Or you could simply tell us, we like these recommendations with a few tweaks, and then we'll put that all in one clean spreadsheet and bring it back to you for approval next time.
What does the RAPS committee think? I mean, you guys are the ones that went through the applications, so.
Yeah, I'd like their input, and maybe spend the next couple of weeks communicating some of that.
But we have just, we have to approve it by their next, at the end of our next meeting.
Yeah, but-
We can-
I don't know that I understand enough about it tonight.
We can get together for another smaller little session and, and do that, if you'd like.
Got a question about the request from the Cache, Logan Cache Airport, not receiving any funding for the fuel tank?
You probably want to see, you probably want to see their application.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys have more knowledge.
Yeah. We'll get back, I think, then we will, I think that'll be good. We'll plan to get back together, throw some more numbers in there.
So, Mr. Chair, if we have any that we would like to add, do we do that to you in an email? Or is that something that you'd like us to do?
Yes, if you would, if you have some specifics yourself that you would like to, could you send those to Alma, or just?
Oh, sure.
And just, you know, just some ideas.
These that are here, right?
That's all, that's all of them.
Yes.
Yeah, and don't be deceived by what is requested, and then you see an amount that was given. A, a lot of those are very, very consistent with other years appropriations. And there's a lot of dialogue that goes in, a lot of dialogue, and looking at all the financials. And that committee does extremely, extremely well at looking, it really is to the purpose of everything that's happening. So make sure that money is spent wisely.
And I want to respect that, that's why I'm saying, from the RAPS committee, let them voice how they would approach that with some input.
Yes.
We'll see, get them back together when Alma returns, I believe he gets later on this week.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably need to meet next week.
Okay, we'll do that.
Just, so any other requests you'll send by email to Alma? And then we'll present those to the committee for a final recommendation to you. Thank you.
And everything, even at that point, if these subjects can change.
Just for information, I received a text from Mayor Danes today, that they did find out today that they got a $750,000 matching grant for the money that you guys awarded, have proposed to award for them. So she was pretty excited about that.
I saw that too.
Yeah, they're going to, they've got some, a really good plan, so.
Okay, let's move on to the Providence Landing Annexation Petition to the City of Providence.
Mr. Chair, I think you interrupt, because I know you're controlling the meeting. I should say how hard it is for you to sit in the annex.
Really?
But I can't be here in two weeks. And while I'm here for the opera, and I support the request, I'd like to talk historically about this RAPS tax you're talking about. Because one thing I can do is talk to this- Because one thing I can do is talk to you and tell you how it got adopted, some of the considerations, I think some of the things you should know about that. And also, I want to talk a little bit about tax policy if I could, maybe take five or ten minutes. If not, I can't be here in two weeks.
You won't be here until, I believe, don't we have you?
I'm coming here until four thirty and then my wife.
How about talk about it then?
Okay, if you want to wait that long, it's going to.
Yeah, why don't we get through unless you guys want to?
I think we ought to hear what he has to say.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to take more than thirty minutes. I'm going to have to get in.
It'll take more than thirty minutes?
I mean, I'm talking about what I'm going to talk to you about.
Oh, okay. I'm hesitant, but.
Whatever.
Whatever you guys, what's the rather, what would you guys like to do?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Auctioneer style?
I know you, I know you can do it.
I will. I won't tell any jokes about Sandy.
The only thing is when we do, I'm a little worried. Why I'm worried is that when we allow this, then all the organizations want to come up and do the same thing. And that's what.
Let me tell you what I'm saying and then I think you'll feel comfortable. These boutique tax, we call them, the RAP tax, Zap tax, all came to the Utah Legislature from the cultural and the travel people. And it was really stirred by Colorado who passed a sales tax to help all of their things. It wasn't a RAP tax like we did. And they did it because of their ski industry. Their ski industry was killing us. They were getting so many more skier days than Utah that it wasn't even funny. And so we went on this deal to give this RAP tax and it had two main purposes. Number one is to help the tourism industry. And you see when you go to renew it, they're the ones who lobby for it because that's where it really was donated. Had it not been for their lobbying, it would never have been passed. And I think they were very, very cautious. Two things I put in the bill that are really important. Number one, we put it on a county basis so you get to decide how the money goes. The original bill would have put it all in Salt Lake and the Salt Lake Committee would have decided and we wouldn't have gotten anything. Number two thing is they have to renew it every so often by vote. Nothing more permanent than a tax increase. We made it so the people can go back and look at it if they didn't want any more, they can do away with it. So I tell you that when you focus on what you're doing here, it's done for the tourist people. I think Carl said the thing right in those people. Second, let me talk tax people. I would be really ticked off if you passed a tax on lawyers to give money for a park. I don't mind paying increased dues for court systems and for judges and that. That's part of my occupation. And when we did this, the restaurant company business went berserk. They called it the baloney tax and they really lobbied hard against it. They said, why should we be collecting money to give to all these entities? And we finally got peace with them by the commitment that this money would be used for restaurants and for travel and for people coming in to do that. I think you know as well as I do, our restaurants are not doing well. We have a real problem with some of our restaurants here in this area. And I think anything you can do with this RAP tax to gear in to helping those restaurants and hotels and those people, especially restaurants who are collecting the money, that makes more sense. And I think they'd feel better about it because when you go in and pay your bill, I can complain about this RAP tax on my bill. Restaurant guy can't do a thing about it. He just has to collect it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think you did that in under five. Three and a half minutes, that was pretty good.
I'm not charging that many.
Good answer. You're not charging us or are you the attorney for the Festival of the Opera?
My wife, that's the one I work with.
Good for you. Go ahead.
Okay, just have the image. There we go. Did my meat hit something? Little power glitch, maybe? Here we go. Okay, you see a highlighted parcel, it's just over 10 and a half acres. And you see that it's in an island between Millville and Providence, a county unincorporated island. You see several islands that sometimes occur within a municipality, sometimes between two municipalities or growing towards each other. So this request, it's actually an annexation petition to the City of Providence called the Providence Landing, intended for residential development. And it would reduce an island that you see here from about 25 acres to minus the 10 and a half, you end up at about a 14 and a half remaining island area. In the memo provided in your packet, you see the remaining island area highlighted in yellow. And the staff has reviewed this and from a county perspective, we don't see any increased impacts to the county. And until such owners, the three remaining owners intend or desire to petition to annex into either Millville City or Providence City, that would be an opportunity at such time to bring them into municipality. So this is just an opportunity for you, for state code, to agree to this annexation petition and leave a remaining island, but smaller island.
We've been whittling at this for quite a while, haven't we, in this area?
I don't know the full history and the timing. I would have to bring back any info.
Another 10 years and it'll be all somewhere, I mean, one of those, I guess, so.
Providence.
Yeah, Providence.
This isn't quite regenerating, but there's a perspective for you.
Has there been any discord about this that you've heard about or anybody that's casting nay or against it?
No, I mean, from the county perspective, we just looked at it technically, but not heard any public feedback through the annexation review at Providence City.
I mean, there's still, even though we're saying, yeah, let it go ahead and happen, there's still, if there's disputes, it can still come to the, oh, boy, our.
Annexation.
Annexation Board, yeah.
Correct.
That's, that's no fun. Anyone want to share that?
Talking about the Boundary Line Commission?
Yeah. Yeah, anyone want to share? Anyone?
Any protest could go that route, correct?
So there's still opportunities for things to be worked out if there isn't, but nothing Millville is okay with it?
I've not heard of any opposition to this. Oh, Corey? Thank you.
Okay. I think we probably, and we really, this is something that we vote. I didn't think we voted on this. We just say, is there anyone that's, we go ahead and just give our consent, right?
I've seen votes in the past. I've also seen head nods and agreements.
Well, let's bring it to a vote then. Make sure, anyone here, go ahead and make a motion as such.
I'll make a motion that we approve Providence Landing Annexation Petition to the City of Providence.
Second.
Moving second, we approve the Providence Landing Annexation Petition to the City of Providence. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is the initial consideration, so the rules would have to be waived.
Okay, we'll waive them.
I'll waive the rules.
It's been waived. Okay, we can wave back. So anyway, we've waived the rules, so.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good luck, Providence and Millville or whatever may happen down the road. It'll work out. They kind of get along a little, don't they?
You're going to go out in the parking lot and duke it out now? Turn the cameras on, so.
Okay, let's pop out of other business down there. Is there any changes in the NACO?
I may be out.
That's a maybe?
Yes.
Are we all registered in hotels?
I am definitely out.
There's four of us? Okay. Any additions, deletions to the health days and black and white days?
I probably won't be able to attend that.
On the health days?
On the 13th.
Okay.
Depending on what time we get back on the 20th, NACO.
Is that a Friday or Sunday?
We're done the 19th.
We're done the 19th.
Yeah.
I'm staying over an extra day.
I think on the 19th, the itinerary would give you time to drive back.
Right, yeah. I'm planning to stay over separately.
Okay.
Because you have family down there.
Mr. Chair, what is the, do we have a truck that we drive?
Well, if there's just. Yeah, if we have just the couple, if there's just the two or three, I can provide the Polaris General to ride in, throw things out of, no problem. So that would fit. And I'd even have a driver, so.
I was planning to come too and we have a truck.
Oh, your name's not on there.
Development Services has a nice newer white truck that we can bring with some candy and magnets and all that.
Magnets will stick to that one.
With our blue polos?
I don't know the words.
With our blue polos?
Yeah.
Thank you, Micah.
Thank you, Micah.
You know what, you never gave me mine.
This look-alike stuff just really is not me.
It's not look-alike, it's identified.
We're not a cheerleading outfit, you know?
It's identifying who you are.
So we'll have a vehicle on both parades. Somebody, I assume, sends details about lineup.
So you're bringing the truck then?
Yeah, either, I don't know if Michael is going to or I will work out one of us well.
Yeah, I will not be able to attend the health days.
Yeah, I'll bring the truck.
I could do the black and white days.
Okay.
So for maybe for Blacksmith Fort, do you want us to follow up with Micah if that solidifies?
Black and white days?
Black and white days.
Yeah.
I'm on the other end of the valley, sorry. This is so far.
It's still funny, kind of a funny name for black and white days.
Yes.
I'm surprised they haven't forced to change it, you know?
Maybe on the 20th.
The Holstein Days?
Positive yet.
Well, to be appropriate. The woke world, I agree.
For the parades, the only, like, reason that you really need RSVP is just so we know to bring your magnets.
And they've been contacted where we'll be in the parade, what.
Yeah, that too. I'll get all that stuff.
Yeah, I guess case by case we'll figure out.
I'll take care of all that.
Yeah. I know I ordered magnets for the members of the council, but I only ordered one, so a second one's on order, but it may not.
So on one side of the truck, but maybe not the other.
Yeah. I did, I was supposed to, too, so I only ordered one.
But it is, tight as a sash on you, you know, with the crown and the whole bit, matching blue outfits, okay?
You have a parade wave.
Holstein princess.
Elbow, elbow.
Matching blue.
No, it.
Wave control.
Yeah.
Okay, will you give us the times and everything on that too then, where we're going to be? That's because that's about when the parade starts, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. I'll send you guys an email or a text or something and let you know where you're going.
And all the parades are usually quite a congested little area when they're getting started and everything, so you want to be there at a pretty good time, so. Okay. Council member reports, let's start down there with Carl.
We had a good audit committee meeting and I think we're moving in a good direction and being able to take care of some, making sure that everything's going to where it's supposed to be, so. Other than that, nothing else. And we even had Kate.
At the meeting.
Via Zoom or. Yeah, Zoom or whatever we did.
Yes. I had a meeting with the Bear River Homeless Council that was just really good. Again, they do so much. And also the CJCC, which is the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, David's in charge of that. And we did, had a good meeting, I think got some direction there. And then I took a tour of the senior center with Giselle and spent a little over an hour with her. And that was so helpful and, boy, they do a lot with very little. And thank goodness for people like that that care.
I met with Jess Bradfield just to go over departments, you know, just as a, we gaze on what the clerk's office. Things are going well there. You still got one spot to fill and then future is unknown there. And we've had a couple of meetings with, as the budget committee meeting where we talked in detail about, well, started to get into detail on the ARPA funding allocations with review of the applications. That's continued on to a meeting later in the month. There's some concerns that Nolan has voiced as well as others and that we're reviewing it to fine tune that processing. And then the regular committee, budget committee meeting was last, was yesterday and moving through that process. There's some things that will come to this council on that committee. One thing that Cameron was asking about was maybe either rules of operations or bylaws or something to that effect, just to help clarify what the purpose and the scope of that budget committee is. So there'll be more to come to this body on that subject. And Nolan, I'm sure you have more to chime in on. And then as with several of us, we were able to attend that UAC meeting last week and I felt like that was another good opportunity to rub shoulders with our peers in other counties and to learn from the presenters and our peers on handling the issues that come before counties. Grateful for that opportunity. That's it.
The only thing I'd like to report on is, and I know several of you were there, but went to a veteran presentation down at the Veterans, what is it called?
Cache Valley Veterans Center.
Yeah, Cache Valley Veterans Center. And they were honoring Paul Lamont and it was just awesome. I was just really impressed with the turnout that he had. And I think Phil Redlinger is doing an awesome job down there, so I was very impressed with that.
Thank you. Nolan?
Are we going to talk about what I talked to you about?
Yeah.
I'm going to bring up something that's in previous, on the expense report I had a question, so if you'll all turn to that. Page three, it identifies $50,000. And I'm just confused how it goes because it shows up twice. 2020 Coronavirus Relief Award to DBA Chukarama. Shows there for $50,000 and if you go to the very last page, it shows again and there different check numbers. I know nobody from finances here, but that really stuck out to me as I reviewed this.
What other page is it on?
The first one, page number?
Page three.
Page three, yeah.
Page three, if you go there, there's $50,000 that went to 2020 Coronavirus.
I think, it looks to me right.
It's three on my thing here.
But it's, the first $50,000 is a negative number. Second $50,000 is a positive number, so I'm thinking.
It's the different check numbers.
We got the money in, deposited, and then we paid it out? Is that the way it went? What's the second page number, Nolan?
It's the very last page.
Very last page.
Okay.
So why would there be different check numbers?
That, I don't know.
I think it was voided. I think that's what the V on the side means, so it may have been an error. I can check into that for you and find out exactly what happened.
$50,000?
Yeah, that stood out maybe twice.
What is that?
To a restaurant.
I know, but, yeah.
Yeah, can we get more clarification on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I wanted to bring that up while it's on this Times Expense Report. Mark referred to the Budget Committee. The one thing, there's two things I wanted to bring up about that. One is the Municipal Services Fund is a nightmare as to how it's going. So I asked or proposed, I can't ask, I proposed, that there be a training meeting with the full council so we get your input on this, what's going to be happening in the Municipal Services Fund. And there has been a talk about bylaws and stuff like that. I'm against bylaws because I think I want the opportunity to delve into anything from the council as the budget is ours. I understand there could be an agenda or some things, but I don't want strictness into when it comes to the budget, just like I was asking questions here tonight. So that's where I'm coming from. There was a planning and zoning meeting and so I believe the next council meeting, we have a training meeting with the legislators, is that right? And on the water and stuff like that. You've probably seen what the state has responded on that. But I think as the word gets out, there's a lot of people who are saying, what? We need to be checking on that. So I'm glad we're coming back on that side, so I think that's all I had.
No, I'll just echo some of what Mark said. I'm grateful for the opportunity to go down to the training meeting or the. down to the training meeting or the, what's it called, the training?
UAC.
UAC, yeah. Yeah, management conference and to learn, man, this seems like there's a lot to learn, a lot of content to share there. So yeah, I was grateful I was able to go down and attend with everybody here, really, at some point we were all there, so, yeah, I appreciate that opportunity, but I don't have anything else to share.
Yeah, and did you notice throughout the day, that room where all the county counselors and county commissioners were supposed to be, kind of kept emptying out, and our row had all seven of us through the whole thing.
Solidarity, right there.
Solidarity, we were a good force.
I was wondering where they was all going to have fun, so.
I know, they didn't invite us.
They didn't invite us.
Anyway.
What's better than that?
You know, down there, it is a great opportunity to actually, you start asking questions and you keep wondering where we, what we are doing, and then you start asking in other counties how they are doing some things, and it raises some eyebrows. I talked with some auditors from other counties, and we don't even, we don't even do what they do as far as priorities. And I flabbergasted, so that's one thing I think we'll be talking about to get changed. And then, but no, it's a great, like you say, it is, it is great, and you really get to, you see how things are running in other counties, and sometimes you sit there and go, you know what, we're doing pretty good here, and other times you go, we got, we got some things to learn and go, and grow with, so.
As I look at it, I see, man, our form of government is way better than commissioners.
Well, I found it interesting when they were talking about the fast food that goes in, in the gas stations and that.
Yeah.
I thought that was interesting.
That perked my ears up.
Yeah. Because they're not getting taxed.
Right. Yep.
So, and there's more and more of that coming around, so.
You know, and TRT taxes, and then how there's some, and that's quite a discussion, I thought, on that.
Not a level playing role.
It's been good, so, anyway, we appreciate that. I think tonight has been a very special night with what we saw, to have such an honor to be participating with our, you know, the sheriff's office and all that they do, and I thought that they did very well. I think it's, it's an honor to be able to just participate in that. And when you die, again, throw your coin in the casket, that's, that's one more step up in heaven, you know, so. Okay, Mr. Zook, did you have some appointments or anything?
Just a couple items to report, thank you for including me around in the agenda. I just, I'm sorry I didn't make it to that UAC training, we had our board of health training that same day, and it was actually really great training, but I attended there, and I made some good contacts with the director of Health and Human Services for the state was there, and we talked about some data sharing opportunities with the state, and I think there will be some good things coming out of that, I have a follow-up meeting with her next week. And then HB 371 is a bill we need to work on, if you're familiar with that. Casey Snyder passed that bill, and essentially what it says is 20% of the money we get from rollback, when somebody pays their rollback for their green belt, needs to go into an open space, some kind of open space fund used for that. So that actually went into effect this week. So we, we had a meeting with our assessor and with our treasurer, and I just want to express my thanks to them for the work that they've done to identify what those dollar amounts are. It's about a million dollars a year that gets paid in rollback, so just if you're not familiar with what that is, if somebody has their property in green belt because it's an active agricultural production, they pay a very small amount of taxes, almost nothing. And then if and when they sell it to someone who takes it out of green belt, then they have to pay what they would have paid for the past five years. And like I said, that's about a million dollars a year that we collect from that. So that will end up being about $200,000 a year that will go into this fund. Of course, that means that's $200,000 a year that all of the taxing entities in our county won't receive, they would have received. More than half of that goes to the schools, a portion of that to us, to cities, et cetera. So we do have the portion in place based on what our treasurer and our assessor have worked on to start setting that money aside, but there's gonna have to be some discussion about what exactly we want to do with that money. In discussions with Representative Snyder, he said his, the way he intended it was that the counties would have broad discretion on what to use those dollars for, for projects or to add it to our other open space funds, things like that. So that's something we're gonna need to work on. And speaking of open space, just want to thank our development services staff for working with the newly appointed members of the Cash Open Space Advisory Committee, they're working on getting them together to kick off their first meeting and get things going. Speaking of planning, I attended a meeting last Friday with UDOT, and they are doing a planning study for 8991, and they are looking at the portion of 8991 from Interstate 15 all the way to 10th West, and kind of doing a deep dive, look at what needs to be done in the future on that road. If you're interested in giving comment to them, I can give you the contact person at UDOT. Christopher Chestnut is the regional planner who's gathering input and information. I'm guessing they're gonna have some public hearings or things like that as well at some point during this. But there have been a lot of discussions about what needs to be done as far as expanding that roadway, improving crossings, interchanges, intersections, things like that on that segment. And there, there actually was a lot of discussion in that meeting about what this highway's going to look like in the future, whether it's gonna look like a freeway or continue to look how it does now. I just flat out asked UDOT if their intent was to turn it into a freeway, and they said no, their intent is to figure out what is best for it and do that, but they don't have any preconceived notions about what it would look like in the future. But that's what they're hoping to get out of this planning process, is what we think, what the community thinks, and what the needs are, so that's an ongoing project. And then I was gonna mention the budget committee, and thank you for those of you who mentioned that, so I'll skip that, appreciate everybody's work on helping to narrow down the ARPA projects and working on the municipal services fund issue. Another, another bill that we are working on implementation of that is going to be a challenge is SB 174. That was, that was the bill that essentially said, you land use authorities only get so much time to do certain things, and if you don't, if you don't give comments back or approve or deny or get to certain thresholds on development applications within the timeframes that they set, that those things would just be automatically approved. So I'm gonna be working with staff to come up with some recommendations on what we need to do as a county to be able to comply with that. For example, some of these are gonna require a two-week turnaround where we're gonna have to be able to review it, give our comments, and, and I can tell you, that's not happening now, that's, it's gonna be a challenge to be able to meet those things, so.
Isn't that only on subdivisions?
Yeah, that includes subdivisions.
Only subdivisions.
But I'm not sure if there are other pieces, but it does include subdivisions, I know.
Guess what?
Subdivisions.
Only subdivisions.
Yes. So we'll be gathering input from staff on what they think their recommendations are, and then we'll put together some, some sort of a report to bring to you to talk about what might need to be done. The reason we're working on it now, it doesn't go into effect until next year, however, there are likely to be some budget implications on that, or budget needs to be able to comply with that. I just wanted to thank the sheriff too, and unfortunately, he's not here anymore, but I just wanted to thank him. He hosted our mayor's group, we get together all of the mayors once a month and, and have a dinner and talk about issues, and this month the sheriff hosted us at his facility, gave everybody a tour of, of his facilities and an overview of the functions that he provides, which I think is good because many, most of our cities contract with him for law enforcement services. But I think oftentimes, people forget about a lot of the things that happen behind the scenes, like the jail. So we took the mayors on a tour through the jail and showed them what was going on, I think they were all really impressed with what a major operation that is and how much work it is. And so the sheriff and his staff gave some overviews about their various services that they provide, from animal control to emergency management, and just wanted to express the thanks on behalf of all of the mayors who were able to do that. Also, my last thing, just wanted to mention that I attended a little over a week ago, the Maloof Foundation Summit, this is an annual event the Maloof Foundation puts on, and we're really blessed to have the Maloofs in our community, their organization, and their foundation based here in Cash Valley. They, their primary focus as Maloof Foundation is to stop child exploitation, and they had a number of speakers at, at the event on, from a national level, really, that they're working on these types of issues. John Walsh from America's Most Wanted was one of the speakers, Elizabeth Smart, who's actually part of their foundation now, is one of the speakers, as well as a number of other experts. There were legislators there, it was actually held at the Capitol, and they're working on a number of things to improve safety for kids in our world, really, they're, they're making an impact far beyond the boundaries of Cash County. So just, just wanted to mention what they're doing, thank them for their efforts, and express my gratitude that they're here in, in Cash Valley and what they're doing here. And that concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Can I bring up one thing on that Senate bill and the subdivisions? I keep bringing up, especially if the turnaround has got to be so quick, that any time that we're doing something in the county, we've always notified property owners within 300 feet. I think that needs to expand so that we get property owners that are going to be affected in here or aware of it sooner, so.
I think we even need to notify the 300 feet property owners, which I, I know that has not happened.
Well, I think it needs to extend, and just exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. No, that, there's some, I think, how many open spaces you got up there right now in development services?
As of a month from now, we'll have none.
A month from now, but right now?
Um, one, a permit check, they'll be starting at the end of this.
Okay, we, that, that needs to be ramped up, that needs to be, there's a lot of the people in the county that are, they're flat out mad, so.
Agreed.
Anyway, okay, we'll adjourn.